Okay, we're gonna get started. If the people can start to sit down, we're gonna get started, please. Thank you. Okay, this is, we're gonna open up the July 20th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. This is being conducted in a hybrid format at Southwick Regional School, per the general laws which allow for such a format. We are recording this. If anybody else is recording it, just let us know, please. Just state your name and address, please, if you could, or who you're with. Thank you, Peter. Anybody else recording this? Okay, thank you. All right, 6 o'clock Town Planner's Report. Since our town planner is on vacation this week, I will give the very brief report that he has. Chose a wonderful time, and I'm hoping he's having a good time. So here is his Town Planner's Report. "I met with Chief Landis, Building Inspector Kyle Scott, and Jerick Cornell's from DPW to provide and review facts related to the Marina/parking matter at 101 Point Grove Road." Secondly, and finally, he says, "I met with Building Inspector Kyle Scott, and subsequently the abutter to the rail trail Ale House to provide context and follow-up clarification about the use/bounty matter that was raised at the July 13th meeting in his report." So those are the two matters for the Town Planner's Report. That concludes that. 6:05 is public comment. Let me clarify, as I always do, that this is an opportunity for folks to bring something to the board's attention that is not on the agenda tonight. Since there's only one item on the agenda, if you have non-Carvana-related issues to bring to the board's attention, be your opportunity. So just, you know, raise your hand if you have a public comment. I'll try to see ya. Yep, one right there. You're gonna have to just come up. We could just make sure the microphones at the aisles are on. Perfect. Thank you. And while you're doing that, if anybody on Zoom has a question, please just use the raise hand button, and I will try to get to you after the folks here in the audience. Just please state your name and address, please.
Good evening. Caroline Gothier, 600 Con Road. I'd like to thank you all for tolerating all that you've all been through. I think it's been rather difficult. I feel as though you're all taking the fallout of what we feel more the selectmen should have done. And that's informed us that it was, in fact, Carvana Distribution Center that was gonna be going in. So, thank you.
Any other public comments in the audience? Diane? No, there's one right behind you. For Zoom, you have to go in front of the microphone. Thank you, Diane.
Diane Gale, 5 Point Grove Road. I fully second what Caroline Gothier just said. Thank you.
Anybody else have public comment? Yep.
Hi. Molly Jacobs, 140 Point Grove Road. With what the first two women just said, I agree. I can say that I think that you guys have taken some real hate that you don't deserve. Dave Sutton, I grew up next to, he was a neighbor of mine my entire childhood. If anybody should be representing this town, it's Dave Sutton. He's one of the best men I've ever met. So I think that we need to come together as a town, as we have, clearly, and look to the future of what we want. Because this clearly, what we're here for tonight, is not what we want. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Yep. Hold on, no, hold on. We have one over here. Thank you.
Jim Haslowski, 10 Laurel Ridge. Mainly a format or a question concerning the vote, because this is a vote, either yea or nay. And I was just wondering, and there was talk, in the future if something like this comes up, how do we do a town vote? And also, another question is, is if you vote and we disagree, do we have an appeal process? Because Carvana has an appeal process. So does the people have themselves an appeal process? And how do you determine whether or not it's a town vote?
So, one is, let me say, because you reminded me before, if everybody could please shut off their cell phones, that would be great. Which I forgot to say before. Thank you. That's okay. I have a note here to do it, and I just failed to do it. But, you know, that's Carvana-related. We'll talk about it when we get into that public hearing. And, but, you know, I'll explain the process and what's going on. Okay? Thank you. Yeah. Go ahead. Just go to the microphone, please. Thank you.
I'm Alice Boyd of 57 Tannery Road. I just wondered if you could all introduce yourselves so we could put the names and the faces together.
Yeah, we forgot our little name placards that we have when we're at Town Hall. I'm Mike Doherty on the chair.
Marcus Phelps, I live at 28 Depot Street.
Richard Utzinger, 146 South Loomis.
David Sutton, 207 Ward Vining Road.
Dave Spina, 7 Great Brick Drive.
Jessica Thornton, 352 Granville Road.
Okay. Yeah, the rest are the, I'm sorry, the rest are the applicants up here. So that's the rest, that's the entire board. And I didn't realize I was supposed to say my address. 16 Lexington Circle. So, any other public comments out here? Yes, sir. You come up to the microphone.
My name is Ernie Russo. I moved into this town in 1966 and left in 1983. When I got here in 86, 66, it was a loving, caring community. I came back a week and a half ago. I do not like what I see. I don't want the change. I know that it can't go back to 1960s and 70s. But I don't wanna see industry come in here and destroy this community. I wanted to go back to at least somewhat like we had back in the 60s and 70s. My wife put a lot of time and effort into numbering all these streets, all these houses on these streets. I know that if she were still alive, she'd be upset right now. I also know that the realtors and the planning committee look at two different things. The planning commissioner looks at the revenue coming in, thinking there won't be more taxes, which we will have. And the realtors look at the cash that they can make on the sales of property. Do your job and do not pass this thing.
So, I'm just gonna remind folks, please. Public comments is for items that aren't on the agenda tonight. Obviously, Carvana is the sole item on the agenda tonight. So I'm asking for non-Carvana-related public comments, if you have any. So if we could, anybody else have public comments?
John Wally, 38 Foster Road. I know we've been beating around the bush a little bit here, but what we need is a new select board.
Any other public comments tonight? Okay. Right here.
Debbie Ranjo, 228 Claus Anderson Road. I noticed when you gave the Town Planner's Report, it mentioned two meetings that he had attended, but it said nothing about what happened at those meetings, what was discussed, what the results of the meeting were. And as a citizen, if I were to read those minutes, I would have no clue what I should think about that. I would appreciate a little bit more substance in the report. Thank you.
Any other public comments tonight?
Karen Zorick, 46 Fred Jackson Road. I just think that, as you've mentioned in a previous meeting, the master plan for the town hasn't been looked at in many years. I would just hope that that would be one of the first things that you're gonna continue to do and to look at now, to update it. We obviously see that a lot of the zoning and things that weren't relevant way back in the 70s, that weren't in people's mind that could happen, could happen now. And I think that you should maybe look and review that.
This is probably a good time for a public service announcement, which is that the master plan funding has been approved for this year. And so, we will be looking to set up master plan committees and work on getting the master plan done over the next few years. So... You will see posts and requests for people to participate. All right? Any other public comments? And if I'm missing you, just stand up. But I'm not seeing any others. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Ed Roberts, 72 Vining Hill Road. And I will keep it very short, but I've prepared the documentation. I'm thrilled that the application's been withdrawn.
Again, sir, no, we're not discussing Carvana in the public comment section. The public comment section is for items that are not on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Can I give you my information?
You can certainly submit it. That's fine.
I would like to submit this on the effects of contamination of groundwater for protection of the Southwick Aquifer, that it be included in the plan. And thank you to all you guys for the work you're doing.
Any other public comments tonight? Okay. Zoom, I see two. Jared, do I need to do something, or can you unmute them so they can speak? Why don't we start with?
If you can unmute the ones that you would like to speak, I will now unmute Zoom. If you can do that.
All right, so this, Calvin Kagan is the first one I see. Yeah, I just, there we go.
Hi. Good evening. I'd like to thank you all for your diligence, and I'd like to thank my neighbors for their hard work. I noticed, I've noticed in the past that there was a Zoom chat that allows members in the Zoom to communicate amongst themselves and to maybe raise issues that we may have of a technical nature with you guys as they occur, so they can be addressed, like, so in the past. And I was wondering if there was an intentional choice not to include a chat, or is it just on my end not being able to find it?
And Mr. Kagan, if you just would put your address for the record so that we have it, that would be great.
Sorry, 12 Garganters.
No problem. It's a fair point, and I should have announced that before we got into anything. But yes, the chat has been disabled today. It's, we're sort of working through how the best way to do hybrid, if we continue to do it, is with what was the potential size of this. And I can tell you, as someone who had to read through the chat last time, it's just simply not workable to sort of pay attention to it and have that sort of ongoing chatter going on. I guess whether it's a means for the folks on Zoom to communicate and talk to one another, as potentially people here could, I don't, I guess I'd have to think through that. But, you know, we're sort of working through the best way to set up these meetings with this Zoom option, at least for the near future. So, please offer suggestions. But we're, like, as I said, we're trying to work through the process, and, you know, things may change as we go along. I see on Zoom, someone that just says Zoom user, with their hand up. Just make sure you say your name and address for the record, please.
Hi. I'm Sage Feard, 91 Granville Road. I'm just wondering, do we have any way to put a fund together for the town to get a better audio system for these new hybrid meetings? Just so that we don't have miscommunication anymore, and we can actually hear if we're not able to be there in person? Because I'd love to donate to get us a better audio.
One, let me say, if you knew the time and effort that went into doing what we're doing right now, I think you'd be quite appreciative of that. But I can say, from a planning board standpoint, where we typically do our meetings is in the land use room in Town Hall. I know they're outfitting that for, you know, audio and repeatability. So hopefully, that works out well. All right, I think that's the only two I see on Zoom. All right, so... We will go to, oh, I see an L. Kelso. And actually, I think I saw that before, and it just kind of disappeared. So if you want to go to L. Kelso on Zoom for a public comment, that's fine.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Go ahead.
My name's Lindsay Kelso. I'm at 28 George Loomis Road. I just wanted to notify you. I know that it's been mentioned about the volume or communication, but we can barely hear on Zoom anything that you are saying. And half of the public comments that were made, I could not hear at all.
So, is that better?
That's much better.
Okay. So that's a user error. Let me try to do this from now on.
Thank you.
All right. So 6:10. We have the continued public hearing for 686 College Highway, 34 Feeding Hills Road, and 0 Feeding Hills Road, the Carvana Project. I did receive a letter from the applicant's representative today, so I will turn it over to them and let them speak on that.
Can everybody hear, can everybody hear me? Guess so. Good evening, for the record. I'm Rob Lebec from our Lebec Associates. I'll let the folks here introduce themselves from Carvana.
Jen Roldan with Carvana.
Erin Merez with Carvana.
So, there's a couple of things I would like to say on behalf of the applicant and on behalf of the project itself. We have withdrawn the application without prejudice. Essentially, what that means is that we are asking to withdraw that. We've had a number of conversations with folks in the community. We have seen the signs. I live in Westfield. I've seen the Westfield signs, too. I think we counted 78 signs on the way to ice cream the other day. So we understand, and Carvana understands, what's happened in the last few months as people become aware of the project. You know, when we started out the project, and this is something for the town to think about as you're going through the master plan. The master plan is a great process, but it doesn't have any teeth. What has teeth is your zoning map and your zoning ordinance, or in this case, a bylaw. So when you see something like this come in, and it's either allowed by right or allowed by special permit, you know, applicants and folks coming into town to do projects are looking at that zoning map, as is a land consultant like me. And I've been here for, you know, I've been doing this for about 22 years. We did Wally Park. We did a number of other less controversial projects over the years. But what we do each time is we look at the zoning and see what's allowed. And a lot of what you have in town is allowed by special permit, which means pretty much any application you come in with requires a special permit, which in some ways is good because it provides control. In some ways, it's maybe certain things should be allowed by right. I think the only thing allowed by right, for example, on College Highway, would be a bank and I think a church are the two items that are allowed by right. So anybody that would want to come in with a small business would have to go most likely through a special permit. And that's good and bad, and you guys can assess that situation. But it's important for you to understand that the folks from Carvana found a very flat, developable site where they had an environmentally sensitive project based on the regulations. I know that there's a lot of impact. We are aware of the impacts that you folks are concerned with. We listened. I spoke with Mike McCabe, a former member of the Traffic Commission in the city of Westfield. We spoke with John Wally a few times, who obviously is a land preservationist and, you know, well-liked in town. The, you know, the process is there for a reason. I will say that this planning board is probably one of the best I've seen in Western Massachusetts. We do, we don't do one project a year. We probably have about 400 projects we do a year in Western Massachusetts. And these are good people. Who knows how they were gonna vote, but they were gonna take it into consideration. And they were gonna do what you guys elected them to do. These are elected folks, and they're good people. And I've also worked with your selectmen, who seem like they're under fire not to go against Mr. Wally because he's a friend. But I would say they have the best intentions in mind. And it's hard to see some folks get that kind of scrutiny when they were doing the best thing that they thought for the town, what they were elected for. And after a 20-year career on the planning board, I can tell you Mr. Moglan is about as straight a shooter as you're gonna find. So with that said, Carvana respects what the town of Southwick has said. We respect your concerns. Good questions have been raised by your attorney. He had questioned whether or not Carvana would be coming back. I will let Carvana speak to that. But just so you know, I believe legally, with a request to withdraw without prejudice, it would allow the applicant to come back, either with the same project or a different project, within, you know, a period of time. If you're denied on a project, on a special permit, typically you cannot have what's called a repetitive petition within two years of that. Now, as far as intentions go, I'll let them speak to that. And I would be happy, once they're done answering any questions you may have. But the intent, as my understanding is, is to scrap the project in Southwick. And I would urge the folks in town that have raised the money and that are all now together and united to look at the zoning map and to look at the zoning ordinance that is tied to it. That's where your teeth is. That's what you can control. You can change that at town meeting. And that will help you not having projects that you don't want. It'll help me not getting my butt kicked all the time, so, okay? So, thank you for your time, and I will let Jen speak to whether their intent, what their intent is.
Thanks, Rob. To that question, our intent really is to move on. We listen to you. We understand your concerns. So we'll be looking for another site in a more appropriate area. But I do want to say that this has been an incredible showing of participation in the public process. We really do appreciate the passion that you have for your town. It was incredible. Thank you.
I'll turn it back to the chairman. And through the chair, I'd be happy to answer any questions any folks may have, and I'm sure the folks from Carvana would as well. Thank you. You can. A lot of you have.
So I don't, with a motion to withdraw pending, I don't want to keep people here too long tonight. I like to act on it reasonably quickly. But I do, as the chair of the planning board, going through this process, I do have a few comments to make. A lot of you probably seen me try to answer questions, engage, be as open as possible on Facebook and otherwise. You know, through this process, in looking at the Facebook forums and speaking to folks, in reading, especially, or watching television news reports, seeing some of the letters to the editor, you know, I've found it a bit disconcerting, though perhaps not surprising nowadays, but a bit disconcerting to see the attacks and the misinformation, and things to sort of take away the legitimacy of the process that the planning board has to go through. We have a very specific process when we are considering permit applications. We are not politicians. We're not making policy. We're not representing what we want. We are sitting like you would as a jury, and we are taking evidence in, and we are applying laws, general laws, bylaws, to that evidence. That's what we do when we're doing these permit applications. And I certainly respect the personal opinions of everybody. I want you to express that opposition and your personal opinions. From our standpoint, and this is for going forward, you know, trying to make sure you have facts correct and trying to express your opinions with respect to the bylaws, as Rob was just talking about. I mean, the bylaws, the zoning maps, those are where the teeth is. And so, that's what we have to look at. And so if you can express your opinion in that regard, and I think as we've moved through this process, a lot of folks did, and I appreciate that. But I would just ask, as we go forward, that folks try their best, really try, when they hear opinions, to not just accept those, to sort of take a thorough look at those and reconsider, you know, consider the facts and consider whether, you know, they need more information to make an opinion. Folks on this board, folks on the select board, I think have taken incredible criticism and attacks throughout this. I have seen people trying to protest businesses. I have seen personal attacks. It's just not what this town is, and we need to stop that. It's not useful in any way, shape, or form to turn this personal. I appreciate the opposition, but that can be expressed in the way it needs to be expressed. Outside, and it's also worth noting that all the folks here are volunteers on this board. And on the select board, they're certainly not making big bucks for what they do on the select board. And, you know, I speak most to Doug Moglan on the board, but I don't frankly know how he has the energy to get through the day doing a regular job and on the select board and, you know, family and other friends and things that he has to do. So I think people need to respect the amount of time that folks are given to these positions in town. You know, I don't, I can speak only for myself, but I don't do it for... it for any sort of power or this or that. I do it out of a fundamental sense that we need to give back to our community. That is how I've been raised. That's how I do things in my life. And this, as a lawyer, it seems fitting for me to give back to the town in this respect, since we're dealing with the law a lot. I am an awful athlete, but my daughters like me coaching, so I do that as well. That's, you know, and I...that's a fundamental part of who I am, and that's what I'm trying to do. I didn't do this to try to, you know, force a project on the town. I mean, that's not how we do things. We're not trying to hide things from the town. That's not why we do this. Okay? I also want to point out the folks over at Carvana and Mr. Levek and his folks from his office. Now, I remember reading a comment at some point about calling Carvana a bully in this case. You've been at these hearings, and you can go back and listen to them. The people who've been the most respectful of the process and of the board are those folks sitting over there. And, you know, you can disagree with what they say and the substance and whether it's truthful and what about it, but they have not raised their voice. They've sat, and if they didn't answer questions, that goes to the substance of their application. But they've been respectful. Mr. Levek, you know, and I've known him for a while, is well-respected in this community. He does a lot of work in this community, and his product shows that for the most part. We have applications that come before us where we have to do a lot of work to get those to a point where we can consider them for a permit. You know, there's always work when something comes in, but I'll tell you, he does a hell of a job over there. So, you know, he's had personal threats made against him because of this project, and that's not right. So, again, the only thing I would say, and I'll finish this up, is I hope this town comes together and starts acting like a community and starts being kind to one another, because that's the most important thing. Okay. Folks? Folks? Again, I agree with that 100%. Okay. If...okay. So let me...let me stop for one minute, please. Please. Okay. So let me...because this is an open meeting law complaint that I was dealing with today that I have to file tomorrow. So let me just tell you what the substance of it, which is that the board appear, and the chair particularly with me, is the one who has control of the meeting. And so until you're recognized, you're not supposed to be speaking at these meetings. So I would ask, please, if folks could kind of keep it down. I'm trying...honestly, maybe I'm expressing it the wrong way, but I have sat there and read those Facebook forums for the last month and a half. And, you know, if you tell me, if you think that those are representative of this town in large part, then great. I don't know what to tell you. But that's...I kindly ask, I really do, to sit down and read some of those and tell me if you think that those are appropriate. If you heard some of the stuff that has come our way, if you think that's appropriate. I can't count on both hands and feet the number of times that the select board and the planning board have been told they're taking bribes on this case, on this project. So, correct. So that's what I'm saying. Okay? So I will turn this over. If anybody else on the board wants to speak before we vote on the motion, you can. Yep. If it's a point of information, go ahead.
Name's Thomas Leary. Born and raised here 59 years. I live on Claus Anderson Road. I grew up on Berkshire Avenue. Never even she got this far.
That's not a point...that's not...excuse me. No, sir, stop. That's not a point of information. That's not a point of information. That's not...that's not a point of information. That's not a point...that's not a point of information, please. Mike, can I speak? So I just want to...and sir, sir, if you want to stay in here, please, I'd suggest that you sit down. And I'll explain, actually, what your question may be. The planning board is required by law to hold a public hearing on any application for a permit that it gets. It is required. That is why we are here, because we are legally required to hold a hearing on this application. Okay? You don't want it. If we said no on day one and just said, "We don't want to consider it," you would have it. This is a process, and it's legally required, and it's important. And I will tell you, you will not get the results you want if you do not allow the process to occur. Yep.
And that is on the applicant?
If you could say your name and address, please.
Jim Meslowski, 10 Laurel Ridge. And our attorney...the attorney brought this up. The applicant is not Carvana. It's a construction company, and I don't see a representative here. And if an applicant is going to apply, they should be here.
So perfectly appropriate point of order. The applicant's representative is here. Mr. Levek is here. That is the applicant's representative. He has filed the request for withdrawal on behalf of the applicant. That is perfectly acceptable.
If it's helpful through the chair?
Thank you.
So the folks from Carvana were planning on being at this meeting. The gentleman from Brickman Constructors, who is the...was going to be the general contractor and sub out to local contractors to do the project, Andrew is in the Midwest and has a young baby, and we felt that it was still appropriate because, you know, this is a Carvana project, even though they were the applicant on their behalf, to have those folks here. That's why they flew out from Arizona and I forget where Jen lives, but they did come out out of respect to close this process out with you. But Andrew, I'm sure, would be more than happy to be here, but he's got a little baby at home. So, sorry.
And also another question or point of order is that when they have a project like that, why is it not identified who it's coming from?
Sorry. That's not a point of order, sir. That's not a point of order.
Just a point of information.
Okay. Anybody on the board have anything they want to say before we take a motion? Huh? All right. Do I hear a motion to accept the request to withdraw? Point of information. Just please state your name and address first, please, sir.
My first point is I'm from Westfield, so I don't know if I have the right to speak.
You can say your name and address, and if you have a point of information, please do so.
My name is Ronald Camega, 36 Daniel Ridge, Westfield, Massachusetts. A key point that he stated, I believe, and I don't get this correct, is with prejudice or without prejudice. They're bringing back their application. I understand him to say that they may be able to come back within two years and bring forth their plan by having with prejudice?
I could speak to that. Or you can. You know that. Just, they're asking for a request. And if I say anything wrong, let me know about what you're asking for. But they're asking for withdrawal of their request for permits, their application for permits without prejudice. That ends the hearing process. It doesn't reach a decision on the actual substance of the application of the permits.
So they could come back within two years?
They could come back anytime they want.
So that people should understand this, that they could come back. They are holding their options open to them. My second point is, given the fact that we leave here tonight, I have viewed you people, and you've stated before, you're judge and jury. You simply rule on the facts, and you have a very, very loose set of zoning requirements. That's why these people came and tried to take advantage of your loose zoning requirements. I know that you now have subsequently put in a ecological review that has to be done, a master plan. Does that give you more opportunity to reject plans? And if not, what zoning requirements are you going to put in in order to prevent major projects like this to happen?
Sir, I don't mind you clarifying something with the motion, but this isn't a point of information. That's a public comment that should have been made earlier on. So, thank you. Do I...do I hear a motion? We're not taking questions at this point in time. This is not the public hearing. We have a motion before us, or we're going to make a motion, to accept the withdrawal. Do I hear a motion to accept the request by the applicant to withdraw the application without prejudice?
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
We got to use this.
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Richard Utzinger, second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstaining. Okay. So the application has been withdrawn. That ends the public hearing. Want to make a motion?
I apologize.
No, 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 no. Stop, stop, please. Ma'am. Ma'am. Okay. Ma'am. Ma'am, ma'am, this is not the time. This is not the time for comments. The public hearing is over. This is not...you can...this is not the time for comments. This is not the time for comments. Ma'am, this is not the time for comments. We got to...we got to do it. We got to do it. We got to do it. All right.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstaining?